Good evening. It is March eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And this is the Planning and Zoning Board agenda tonight. So, number one, we have called order, please?
Mr. Hesse.
Here.
Mr. Seaman. Mr. Koiner.
Here.
Mr. Shroopolis. Mr. Vessi.
Here.
Ms. McCumber.
Here.
Mr. Petron Tony.
Here.
Ms. Vigil.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, number two is approval amendments of minutes from February twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minute that... Post.
I'll second.
Thank you. All approved, say aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, thank you. That passes. Uh, number three, quasi judicial announcement and swearing in of speakers.
This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Planning and Zoning Board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the Board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based on the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria containing the code of ordinances, in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet this criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the Board wishing to disclose any ex parte or conflict, ex parte communications or conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak this evening, if you could please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn? Any of the applicants, anyone wishing to speak at all? Right. Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So, it's sworn.
Thank you. And now we move on to number four, application number eighteen dash one oh eight and eighteen dash one oh nine. Conditional use and associated site plan approval. Expansion of existing cemetery, Cicada Cemetery on three point three nine one acres of land located in the Residential Office, R.O. zoning district located at twelve oh one East Tarpin Avenue.
Okay. And, uh, this, uh, proposal is located in the Residential Office zoning district and Residential Office general, uh, future land use category. This is for expansion of the cemetery, uh, including construction of a one thousand twenty-five square foot committal shelter and a six thousand three hundred and fifty-one square foot mausoleum. Um, just to hit the highlights of the staff report. Uh, the city of Tarpin Springs acquired this property in April of two thousand and seventeen, and subsequently demolished an existing barber shop building that was on site. And, uh, the, the city proposes to expand the existing cemetery uh, that is located on adjacent property to the west. And that expansion will include traditional burial sites, a mausoleum, committal shelter, the vehicular and pedestrian access and parking that you see on the, uh, proposed plan. The cemetery use is a conditional use in the Residential Office District. Just going, hitting the highlights on the conditional use standards for review. Uh, the design does comply with the standards of the Residential Office District and the Land Development Code. And it is located adjacent to other like uses, including existing cemetery to the west. Um, as you know, Rose Hill Cemetery is located to the north of this property. Uh, we have public recreation and office uses to the north and northeast and east, and then across Tarpin Avenue, we have single-family residential uses. The project is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the city's comprehensive plan and with the Residential Office General Future Land Use Category. Um, with respect to adverse impacts to, uh, environmental, uh, resources, the property does have a Cypress wetland that is being preserved and protected with a twenty-five-foot setback buffer. The proper, the proposed use will not adversely affect property values in the area. And, uh, it will not require extension of additional public services to the site. It's already served by City Water and Sewer. And it will not, um, impact the city's ability to provide adequate facilities. Um, again, this, this proposed use is consistent with the uses in the area and is judged to be an efficient and orderly use of the land, especially considering the surrounding uses. Um, sort of a consolidation of cemetery and institutional type uses that are in the area. With respect to some of the site plan standards, I'll, um, try not to repeat myself. Uh, one item is that the cemetery and committal shelter will be built within one year. And the mausoleum is, is scheduled to be built within the next five years. Uh, access is via North Jasmine Avenue. As we mentioned, uh, there are utilities available to the site. The applicant did complete an environmental and engineering report for the site. Uh, there were no endangered or protected species, um, found to be using the site. And again, the wetlands are being buffered and preserved. Um, there were no cultural or archaeological resources identified either. Um, the adjacent Cicadia Cemetery and Rose Hill are both listed on, uh, designated on the National Register as historic places, so, um, this is consistent with that and will probably actually enhance that as opposed to some other use of the property. Again, adequate facilities are available. And the Technical Review Committee last reviewed this project at their February seventh meeting, February seven, two thousand and nineteen, and those minutes are attached. This was properly noticed and there were no public responses received from the public. So, staff, um, is recommending that application numbers eighteen one oh eight and eighteen one oh nine and Resolution twenty nineteen oh seven be, uh, for conditional use approval and associated, uh, site plan, uh, be approved to allow for expansion of the existing Cicadia Cemetery, including construction of the one thousand twenty-five square foot committal shelter, the six thousand three hundred and fifty-one square foot mausoleum on three point three nine one acres located at twelve oh one East Tarpin Avenue in the Residential Office zoning district with the following conditions. Number one, the mausoleum is approved as a part of this conditional use and is a part of the Resolution twenty nineteen oh seven, and must be constructed within five years of the effective date of the resolution. Number two, the developers responsible for acquiring all jurisdictional permits and for meeting the Land Development Code. Number three, construction plans shall be consistent with the site plan, and all fees shall be paid in accordance with the Land Development Code. The signage that you see on the plans, uh, those must be submitted separately for, uh, review under the Land Development Code and approval as a separate signage permit. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Board, anybody have questions?
I don't know where to start.
Well, it is still residential. Alvin.
I, I didn't, I'm, I apologize, I did not get this in the computer, and so I'm quick read. How many sites are proposed in the, uh...
How many burial sites?
Yes, how many funeral?
Okay. Um, I will have to look at the plan set and see if I can answer that. The applicant's representative is here as well, so we can ask some of those. He might know some off the top of his head, I don't know. But I'll take a look and see if I can...
City of Tarpin Springs has someone who, what, who manages this property?
Yes, that would be, under Public Services, the cemetery staff would, would continue to manage the, the existing cemetery and this property as well. It would become part of Cicadia Cemetery.
Any idea what the price, uh, what the value of the sites are gonna be?
You mean, the, the current appraised value, or...
It's already been purchased.
City's purchased the overall site?
Yes.
Interior, the, the funeral site?
Uh, I don't know.
That is a determined...
Um, not that I know of.
Anyone else on the board have a question?
I have a question about the trees. Um, there's usually mitigation if you're taking down trees and looking at the, at the site plans. It looks like there's quite a bit, because it is a very wooded area. Uh, will there be other trees, um, replacing that in other areas, or how are you addressing that issue?
Yes, the applicant will be required to mitigate tree impacts in accordance with the, the Tree Preservation Ordinance. And the applicant, uh, or the, the site plan does accommodate areas for trees. I'm not sure, it's been exactly decided if any of the larger trees can be preserved on site given the number, the, um, layout and the number of burial sites proposed. Um, but there are, there is a buffer all the way around the site. Not required, but it's, there's tree planting provided all the way around the site. There's only, the only required buffer is the eastern buffer adjacent to the office complex that's there, so... There seems to be sufficient room to mitigate tree impacts. The city arbors has looked at this, but it needs a final, um, look to get the exact number.
Looking at the site plan, it looks like a lot, they're taking a lot of trees down, so... Kinda need to do that.
But they're under the same guidelines as anyone else as far as the trees?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the Board? No? Then at this time, I'd last ask if there's anyone in the public area that would like to ask or have any statements or ask any questions?
If you're gonna speak, just, when you need to come up to the podium.
Please state your name and address.
Can you please raise your right hand?
The microphone.
Barbara Frangos.
And address?
Twelve nineteen East Tarpin Ave.
Sorry. And do you swear from the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I haven't looked at any...
Keep with the microphone, please?
I haven't looked at any site plans, but I just wanna find out what's gonna happen to my office, because I'm twelve nineteen and I know there's like orange ribbons around most of the trees that are like right next to my office, so...
And your office is where?
I'm right east of the wooded area.
Okay.
Twelve nineteen East Tarpin Ave is my office, Laser Spa, and then there's a chiropractor in front of me, but she's kinda more, um, east of me, so I don't know who I ask.
So, you're in the property right next to this area then, right?
Yeah.
Correct, okay. And your question then is?
What's gonna happen to the abutting area next to me? Because I know there's been a bunch of guys in there with putting orange, uh, ribbons around the trees and I'm just wanting to know what the plan is for, you know, I mean, it's a cemetery, abutting my property. Like, is there gonna be trees, is there gonna be a fence?
Um, well, um, looking at the site plan layout, we do have that here if you wanna look at it. Um, that's basically the east side is where the parking lot and the committal shelter and mausoleum will generally be located on the property.
Can I show her the site mark?
Yeah.
Do you wanna look at? From what I can tell, it looks like there's probably one tree that's actually coming down, but the rest are circled, so I was assuming that the orange tape is just identifying the trees and then...
Yes.
Okay. Oh, so it's only to identify...
I think that, when they did the site plan, I think they...
Oh, no, the, the orange, the orange tape is for the tree survey. So, the, the arbors is hired, they go out, they tape each tree, they record what it is, how big it is. That, that's for them to, um, have a surveyor go in and survey the location of those trees, so people know where it is. That's what the orange tape is for.
Where do I see the site plan? I mean, is it online, or...
Um, it is online, or you could come into our office and see it.
Okay.
We're both, and I can give you a card if you wanna email me and I'll...
Yeah, okay.
Look, if you wanna do that, and I can send you the link to it.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions? Do you have some concerns?
Well, the concern is, is that I just wanna make sure that there is some barrier between me and my, my clientele coming in, that there's not a funeral service going on, you know, that they can plainly see. I mean, we're in like a setback area with people in and out. Um, so, yeah, that's my biggest concern, is that it's just, you know, with...
And that is where the eight-foot buffer with trees and a hedge is required, is along that, that line. So, they'll either have to preserve trees in place to meet the buffer, plant trees. They'll have to have a hedge along there as well.
Eight feet from the property line?
So, there'll definitely be a fence, there's gonna be a buffer.
Yeah.
And it looks like to me that there is also a parking lot on that side.
All parking lot.
Does that answer your questions?
Yeah, it answers my question, I'll go online.
Okay. Thank you.
And to answer the earlier question, um, it's sheet SC three point oh oh shows seven hundred and ninety-one in-ground burial sites.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Anyone else like to speak? No? Then at this time, we'll close this public section. And is there any other comments from the Board members? Questions? No? I am familiar with that property, so it, it kinda makes sense. Uh, and so then at this time, I would last that we, uh, approve. We have a...
I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to entertain a motion. Sorry, folks.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a second, please?
Wait, what is the motion for?
The motion is to...
Approve the application eighteen dash one oh eight and eighteen dash one oh nine. Need more.
Thank you. Do I hear a second, please?
I'll second that.
Alright. Can we have...
Ms. Vigil.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Petron Tony.
Yes.
Ms. McCumber.
Yes.
Mr. Vessi.
Yes.
Mr. Koiner.
Yeah.
Mr. Hesse.
Yes. Alright, thank you. Now we move on to number five, application that, uh, number nineteen dash oh eight. Site plan approval. Expansion of existing recreational facilities and existing fifty-four point eleven acre mobile home park, Meadows Mobile Home Park, located in the Mobile Home Park, MHP zoning district located at five oh five Anclot Boulevard.
Okay, and as mentioned, this is, uh, proposal to, a site plan, uh, proposal to expand existing community amenities, recreational amenities, including, uh, seven hundred and seventy square foot expansion of the existing one-story clubhouse, the addition of a nine hundred and twelve square foot health club, the addition, um, which those, uh, items are what put it into the site plan approval process. And then also addition of an eight hundred and thirty foot, uh, eight hundred and thirty square foot pool. Um, and that is located at five oh five Anclot Boulevard in the Mobile Home District, the Mobile Home Park being about fifty-four acres in size. And, um... Just try to hit the highlights without too much. This is also in the residential urban future land use category. Uh, the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan and it is consistent with the, um, permitted uses in the Mobile Home Park District. The district actually permits mobile home parks and requires recreational amenities. Um, the applicant is expanding those amenities within the area that's already designated residential, so... I'm sorry, already designated recreation. Um, the project does not propose new impacts to facilities and therefore meets the city's concurrency standards. Um, it is expected to be able to comply with building codes, has been reviewed for that. Again, won't impact public facilities because there's no expansion of the park itself, just the recreational amenities. The TRC reviewed this project most recently at its February seventh, two thousand and nineteen, meeting. And staff, uh, finds that the applications for site approval is consistent with the applicable review criteria and recommends approval for the site plan subject to the following. The developers responsible for meeting the minimum criteria of the Land Development Code and for acquiring all other jurisdictional permits. The construction plans shall be consistent with the approved site plan and all fees shall be paid in accordance with the Land Development Code. And the site plan shall expire one year from the effective date unless an application has been filed for a building permit. Are there any questions?
I'm assuming that this mobile home already owns this property, then they've already had that?
Yes.
Any questions from the Board?
Is there a completion date for this project, of when they have to have it done?
Um, they didn't give a completion date. My understanding is they wish to construct as soon as they can get site plan approval.
Is there any drainage that they'll have to, um, redirect with the pool and the new, um, studio and the extension of the clubhouse?
Um, they have a slight increase in, uh, impervious surface at this location, but it's been reviewed by a stormwater consultant and the pond, the existing pond is sufficient to handle that increase.
Are there any more questions from the Board? No? Then I'll move this on to the public. Is there anyone in the public audience that would like to question or have comments?
Just for the record, um, is the applicant present, would the applicant like to speak? Seeing you don't wanna speak, okay. So, applicant had the opportunity to speak, applicant doesn't wanna speak. Um, there are no members of the public?
Thank you. Then we'll close this part and leave it to the Board. Board, do we have any more, we're closed, but only to the Board, so do we have any other questions? Done? Okay, then I will ask for a... Motion, thank you, to approve or not approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve application nineteen dash zero eight.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I can hit.
Thank you.
Ms. Vigil.
Yes.
Mr. Petron Tony.
Yes.
Ms. McCumber.
Yes.
Mr. Vessi.
Yes.
Mr. Koiner.
Yes.
Mr. Hesse.
Yes. Thank you. And that closes that portion. Next up is... Find my page now. Staff. I'm sorry. So, I'm asking for number six, staff comments.
No comments this evening.
Thank you. And we move on to number seven, Board comments. Any comments from the Board?
Do we have to restrict ourselves to tonight's meeting?
No, you can have your chance to...
I have a question about the April eighth meeting. What's the purpose of it specifically, generally, or whatever you could give?
The purpose is to bring forth an amendment that came up, obviously, just in the last few days. We have a project which will be coming before you for, that's from the Tarpin Springs Housing Authority. Part of that project involves vacation of an existing roadway. It was realized, I guess, they did not anticipate paying a roadway vacation fee, which is charged by the city. And that is a section of code that we're looking to amend, just for general purposes in addition to this, this situation providing the impetus for doing it now. So, that code section will be coming before you on the eighth to look at revising the street vacation fee.
I've learned as of today that I won't be here, I'm still out of the country, so count me there. I do have a question also, so, I know we, two meetings ago, we had an interesting discussion of the two hundred to five hundred feet, I'm just curious where we are with that.
I do know that the language has been drafted. I do not know if a schedule has been set for it, so I do know that language has been drafted, sent up to the city manager. And of course, you all know with changing the Board of Commissioners and elections, things tend to slow down a bit, you know, so this is just me talking, I suspect it may be delayed a little bit, being delayed just because we don't have a lot of agenda items on tomorrow night and last board meeting.
At least we're moving on.
So, we are moving forward with it.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully, I can report maybe on the eighth as far as when that would be coming before you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are there any more comments from the board?
I have a comment. I was absent at the last meeting, and I'm sorry. I meant to be here, and I forgot to tell my wife.
You'll be fully fine.
Take care of everything in my life, and so I apologize for not being here on.
Thank you.
I have to, I have to apologize, I'm running late, I had to rush, I did my best to get here as soon as I could, I'm sorry about that.
It's all right, you're just in time for closing. So, we move on now to number eight, a German.
God, that was fast.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So be it. Thank you. Okay.